So I would like to call to order the January 27, 2025 Finance Committee meeting. With me today, I have Cara Meeker. I can't handle this if you're watching. No gabbling today. Sarah Sadowski, Jim Richards, and of course, Mr. Dunn. So I shall open it, and Jack, I'm going to pass it right on to you. We've got a pretty robust agenda today. Thank you so much, and I'm excited to hear from our guests.
Yeah, no problem. So you need another minute to set up? Nope?
We're just booting.
We can stall.
We're circling, okay. Yeah, so our first item will be health insurance. We've done this a couple times over the years. Kirsty Karp, which is our lead consultant for, as it relates to our benefits. She's been serving the district since, what, 2012, I believe?
Eleven.
When we came on, maybe a little bit even before that. And so she's, Kirsty's from Barcela, and Jana McCusker is from School Care. Is our health provider that uses Cigna in the backend for the plan. So they'll be here to tell you about kind of where the district is, where the trends are going, and answer the good, the bad, and the ugly.
All right. Fantastic.
And then our second item will be the van transportation, which we handed out that proposal to give you some concept of what we're thinking. And then just the overview of the budget schedule that you have in front of you for, that starts February 12. And then I scheduled a non-public as it relates to collective bargaining. If you needed to get into some more details that we can't get into in the public session.
Great. Thank you.
We're opening.
It's all right, you're good.
You should have the presentation handed out to you.
We do.
Yep, we do.
Yes, thank you.
Is that in front of you?
All right, well, while we're waiting for mine, I need Barry's computer to open. So thank you. I'm here, Steve, and Boris, as Jack said. So we can definitely make this interactive, so that ask questions as we go through. But what I've tried to do is put together a little context. This is obviously a giant line item. It's over $13 million. It's huge. Medical trend is something that is, you know, exceeding inflation. And so it's an area that often there is a lot of, it's a challenging area to understand. So we'll kind of go through what's impacting trend globally, and then your claims and things like that. I don't know why I can't get this to open. But while we're waiting for it to open, we can just start. So if you open the presentation up, so we're going to go through some trends, your renewal, the School Care Plan performance, Cigna, then we'll talk dental, vision, ancillary, and kind of put it all together. So, I don't know why I can't get this to open. If you look at the spreadsheet where it says employee benefits renewal 7125. You want to try to click that? Well, yes, of course. We, as you know, or may, may or may not know, had a very challenging year last year. We're coming off of a couple years of really high claims. And so the claims that we're going to go over that impacted this upcoming renewal, we had two significant high-cost claims that really, really impacted the School Care increase. So you can see here, the School Care increase ranged from, it was 13.4% for the two plans that you had everyone on, and then with a change in plan design, which gave a 4% decrement, we could get it down to 9.4%. So that's the range that we're going to go over for the medical. For dental, you're self-funded by Delta, which is exactly what you should be for a group of your size, which means you pay a flat admin fee, and then you pay claims. You actually don't charge employees for this, so, which is very generous. The admin fee is unchanged. It's going to be 10.56% of claims, so that's not changing. There was a slight uptick in what they're projecting the claims to be, so 2% to 3% increase. So we're seeing, just, you know, dental trend increased a lot after COVID, and we thought it was going to come back down, and it didn't. So we're seeing a lot of groups, and I work with a lot of schools and a lot of municipalities all across the state with dental trend in the 4% to 6% range. It's not uncommon to see 6%. When I was challenging Delta Dental on that, they were saying, well, think about it. What is, what are dentists but like 1,000 small businesses across the state, which are all more expensive to run than they used to be? And so it gets passed through in claims. So with you at 2% to 3%, you're actually kind of much better than norm. Vision is fully insured, but we were seeing this across the board. We were anticipating a rate decrease, and you got one, a 15% decrease. It's held for four years. Vision isn't very expensive, but it is an employee-paid benefit, and it is something that we always tell people, if you wear glasses or contacts, take it because you're going to make money on it, and if you don't wear glasses or contacts, don't take it. But anyway, you got a decrease, that's nice. It's a, it's a low-cost benefit. And then Mutual of Omaha has the ancillary, which is the life, AD&amp;D, long-term disability, et cetera. And we got a rate hold with Mutual of Omaha, which is, we've been getting rate holds several years in a row, which is great. All right, so yay, we have a presentation.
I'm doing it from my machine.
Oh, you're doing it from yours?
It's down, default.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we move to the trends, so what's trend? So medical and Rx trend. Trend is if you have a procedure today, a year from now, what's that procedure going to cost? And so we'll get into that, we'll get into the drivers of that. But, so in New Hampshire right now, we're seeing medical trend in, just regardless of whether you're with Harvard, or whether you're with Anthem, or whether you're with Cigna, at a robust, like, 10%. When carriers come out with a renewal, they put a 10% trend in. And, I mean, I've even seen one this year. It was at, no, they don't do a lot of business in New Hampshire, but at 11%. And, I mean, it's just jaw-dropping to see double-digit numbers in trend. And we're going to get into kind of what's driving that. The good news is that School Care runs lower than trend. They're running, they, so at 6.8%, and that's pretty consistent, that they'd be a few points below trend. That has been the norm for School Care and the pool that they manage. And we can talk about why in a little bit. So when we say medical and Rx combined trend for Cigna, 10.3. I 100% saw 10.3 all year long. Like, that is definitely what they were coming out with. They're saying 8.5% for new business. I guess that's a comment that they're attracting well-run groups to them. So, but 10% for Cigna, prescription drug trend at 11.3. And we're going to talk about this, but like, prescription drugs are the driver right now. These specialty RX, the GLP-1s, which are the weight loss drugs, gene therapies. It is just an enormous cost. I used to have, high-cost claims would be somebody had a surgery or a baby that was like a preemie baby. Now, it's often the drug. A child got prescribed a drug, they're doing very well on it. It costs the employer $300,000 a year, you know, like, et cetera. Like, up to $1 million a year. Like, drugs are really driving a lot of the high-cost claims now, and I don't think that that's going to go away. Some drivers here of medical inflation, so I talked about gene therapy. What gene therapy is, and you're going to hear about this in the news, it's definitely a growing area of medical intervention. It's kind of a one-and-done, so it would be like, it can cure certain types of blindness, or sickle cell disease, or hemophilia with one treatment. But it, the treatment could cost $3 million, you know, like, from $1 million to $3 million. So it's rare, but they exist now. That never used to exist. So, so those are, those are coming down the pike. And this, the burden of this is that we have an employer-delivered healthcare system for many, many, many groups, including schools and municipalities. And so, you know, like, who bears the burden when, you know, somebody's, I mean, it could be any one of our family members or us that gets, you know, has some disease, and then all of a sudden, there's a cure, but it costs X amount. What do you do? So those are coming down the pipe. Advanced cancer care, so we're seeing a lot more people living a lot longer and had much better quality of life at the final stages of life. You know, like, five years more or something with certain drugs, like Keytruda. Like, there's certain ones that are really, you see them prescribed a lot. People are doing a lot better, but they cost money. Transplants, I can't even tell you. Like, transplants are pretty common now. Like, they're, the medical, medicine has come so far that it is not unlikely to have a liver transplant, a heart transplant, a kidney transplant. I have a lot of groups that are having transplants. So that's something that isn't, it used to be very rare, and now it's not very rare. The chronic conditions are, well, workforce shortages, so that would be like the travel nurses, the staffing, where they have to, you know, like, contract higher-cost people to come in. You're going to see, and you do see this in the news a lot, where a hospital goes public and you name the carrier. It's like, I think it's St. Joe's and Anthem right now, but like, it'll be Cigna and somebody else, and where the hospital gets really upset in the negotiations, and they go public, and they're like, you know, such-and-such carrier want, you know, wants such-and-such increase. But the carriers are saying, yeah, but you're trying to charge us 25% more, and we have to pass that on. So it's so frustrating because both sides need each other, and usually we get to the 11th hour and 59th minute after it's been in the press forever, and all the employers are so worried because they have a surgery, you know? And then they always tend to agree because they need each other. But this is happening more and more and more, and the reason it's happening is because it's really hard for a hospital to stay afloat these days. Like, a lot of them are in the red. So they feel like they have to have their increases from the carriers. But the carriers are like, what are we going to do? We're at a 10% trend already. So it's really hard. So that, you've seen more of that. Chronic conditions, so those are not new, but like, the vast amount of our population that lives with diabetes and things like that, those are obviously add a huge amount of cost to the system. Mental health, so that is, I, I actually work with Riverbend, and I was meeting with them today, and I was like, you guys should come up with something where you can just go out into the public and meet with employers and just deliver mental health first aid. Like, everyone is asking for more mental health resources. So it doesn't matter what industry you're in, how big an employer they are, it's, it's just, there's such a need, and there's not enough providers, and there's just not enough resources. And so that is really taxing our system. And then consolidation, so you're, we always hear this, you know, the mergers, right? Whatever Massachusetts hospital's coming up and buying whatever other hospital, or private equity coming in. So all these things, it's just, really are all adding to the medical inflation. And then the drug inflation is, so the advertising, all of those drugs that we see at night. Every, you know, you can name them all, you can sing the jingles, but those are the ones that are, where we see the cost, and like, they're super expensive. If, there's a direct correlation between advertising drugs on TV and people wanting those drugs and getting prescribed those drugs, and those are the high-cost drugs. The GLP-1s, those are the, the weight loss drugs. So that is such an area of emotion. So emotion, people are really, really invested in what side they're on, on this, and, and they're really expensive. So, you know, right now, in the United States, they cost probably, you know, $1,000 to $1,200 a month. 40% of the US population technically could, you know, be qualified. I mean, you just, you can't. I mean, it's so, so, and it's interesting to see like the different tax that groups are taking, like, there's whole states that have pulled them out to save millions of dollars. The Mayo Clinic has said, we're just going to cap it at $20,000 a lifetime, you know? So once you hit $20,000, we're not covering anymore. And then there's a, most groups right now are still not covering them because they worry if they offer them, how are they ever going to take them back? And they're so worried about their high-cost claims already, and they just don't feel like they can afford them, and it's still really early, and, you know, are cheaper forms going to come out, and what are the long-term effects? But the, there's just a lot there. And I, like, I'm getting texts today from colleagues that are at Wellness Fairs that are like, like, people have a lot of opinions about these, and, you know, they, we hear it a lot. So, so those are, you're not, those are not going to be going away part of the conversation, adding a lot of cost.
And we don't cover those. I remember from last year, we had this conversation, we don't cover that.
So you don't? So School Care, we did a whole bunch of focus groups, and ended up, you, an employer could choose whether he wanted them or didn't want them, and it was going to be a 6% load. And did anybody take them?
At this time, no.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like any of them did.
They did a lot of due diligence, you know, and then came forth with rate, GLP-1 rates or non-GLP-1 rates. But imagine, like, if you're, you know, you've got labor unions, and you, you know, you put it out there, and then how do you take it back? And it's really, so I don't know where that's going, but it's, it adds a lot of cost, and it's definitely a controversial area right now. Go to the next one. So we've probably talked about most of these. So the deflators, so, you know, trying to use ambulatory surgical centers or urgent care instead of the ER. We, you know, there's a lot of a burgeoning kind of industry of like nurse care navigators that could steer people to lower-cost, high-quality care, so what does that look like? Biosimilars are really interesting, so Humira is one where there's going to be a biosimilar. But what Humira keeps doing is they increase the rebates to make it cheaper for groups to keep on Humira than to use the biosimilar. So we go and we check, and then it's still better to be on Humira. So it, the, the games these pharmaceutical companies are playing with these drugs where they're making a lot of money, it's, it's quite something. But, you know, as, as drugs come off patent, there will be generics that are to become available. I will say the inflators far outstrip the deflators right now in, in medical and Rx trend. Next. So what are groups to do? Oh, because Jack has the old one without none. So, so we're seeing, and we'll go through, School Care has done a good job of some of the programs, but like, programs that address diabetes. If a group has GLP-1 medications, I'm sorry, there's a typo there, it says GLPA, but it should be GLP-1. Having step therapy, having limits, having, making sure that they, like, some groups make them do coaching, and if you don't meet a certain criteria of the coaching, then they won't give you the drug anymore. Noom is partnering, there's all these things coming out to try to make sure that people are doing something in addition to getting the drug. Because what happens is, when you lose the weight, you lose both muscle mass and body fat, you lose both. And unless you are doing a weight-bearing exercise and eating a high-protein diet and trying to keep muscle mass, when you, if you stop taking the drug and you gain it back, you only gain fat back. So you lost muscle and fat, and you gain only fat back. And so in the long run, if, unless it's paired with a lifestyle maintenance program, it isn't going to be to your best interest from a health perspective. So there's a lot there. We talked about biosimilars. So what else can people do? Drugs, like drug formularies, where not everything is allowed, like, whether it's a narrow formulary, or, you know, it forces people to take certain types of like generics versus brand names. And then health coaching, I think that we are seeing a lot more coaching, a lot more robust EAPs with coaching, just trying to help guide people through this, like, really expensive maze of medication and trying to keep people healthy. So, and these, this just shows like a range of costs, like, so prior off, so what, prior off, case management, disease management, I think sometimes people feel frustrated when they have to like jump through hoops to get a certain surgery or something. A lot of those are in place for the carriers to try to make sure that it's the right surgery for the right person at the right time. You know, are we seeing groups pass more on? A little. You know, a lot of, a lot of the plans, there's not a lot more to pass on, you know? Like, we've kind of gotten to the point where how much more can you increase the deductible? How much more can you, you know? So some cost-sharing initiatives, I'm not, there's less and less return for passing it on. But, you know, like, some incremental passing on of deductibles and copays. Wellness programs, I think on the wellness side, we're seeing a lot more focus now on mental health, and there seems to be a more burgeoning, newer focus on that, and I think that's probably needed. It's, it's really challenging. I mean, I, I think we're starting to struggle with, the costs are getting so high, and it's like, there's only so much you can do to keep them contained. And, and if, even if, when we do put in some of these programs, if you change it on the margin, but you're not changing it at a macro level, like, you're not really significantly changing things by hundreds of thousands of dollars occasionally. Occasionally, you'll see, like, when you put in a, like, save on prescription drugs, two years ago, you saved a ton. But once you do it and everyone's on it, you know, like, then, like, the next year, you don't get another hundred thousand, you're kind of on that new level. And that's what we're kind of finding. So School Care, all right. So this was your, these were your renewal rates for 7125. And we're going to go over kind of how your claims were running and why you ended up with this. But remember, we were just talking about trend, right? So like, trend is running, you know, for Cigna at 10, School Care in, you know, 6.8. You had a high-cost claims year, so for the plans that you were currently, that you're currently on, you ended up with a 13.4. There are plans, you can see below, the 2.0 plan, where there's a little bit more of a deductible, went from $1,250 to $1,500, or $2,000 to $2,500. So you've got a 4% decrement if people went on to those plans. You got to remember, not everybody hits the deductible, right? So only a portion of people actually hit that deductible. And to be honest, based on what I've seen in other groups, that's a really good decrement for that amount of change. Like, 4% for, you know, going up $250 or $500 is a very, is a pretty significant decrement. So anyway, that, that's, that's great. School Care hasn't changed that in a very long time. It's, I think that it's very healthy and appropriate to keep the deductibles kind of inching along, because medical inflation, it, it doesn't inch, it goes much faster than that. And so if you don't do anything, what happens is you don't, you don't, you don't, you don't, and then you end up with too big an increase. And it's, it's, it's always, I think, better to just be kind of incremental and judicious as you go along. And so passing that on was a smart thing. And that was voted in by the School Care membership. So this is an eye chart, we're not going to go over it all, just say, I've got this going back to 2018. What we do is we track every year, what was the trend, what were, you know, how did you do? What were your build rates? What were your effective rates? Did, was, you know, did you get a return of the reserve, et cetera? So this is a snapshot from that. But you have, for the past few years, been running above trend, so, you know? And, and we see this, you're a big group, you're 100% credible, and it feels like, it's like anything, like, it, so it'll kind of like, you'll have a high-cost claim period for a while, and then things resolve. And so, but you've been in one of those higher-cost claim periods with just high-cost claimants, like, you know, things you can't control, preemie babies, I mean, you know, just things happen. But you, for a few years, you've been running above trend, which has led to increases that are higher than the School Care average. And we don't have to go into this, this is more detail about that, so. So this is how, when we look at the claims experience that was used in order to produce the renewal that you're getting, 7125, this is the, the duration, July 23 through June 24. So you ran at 103% loss ratio. So let's just talk about loss ratio. That takes all the claims, it divides it by the premium. So you're underwritten to a 92% loss ratio. That's what we'd like, the claims to be 92% of the premium, and that gives like an 8% admin for, you know, your plan to be run, et cetera. But you ran at 103, right? So for every dollar the district paid to School Care, they paid $1.03 in claims, with no room for admin or running the program or anything like that. So that, that was last year. So that's tough, when, when you have a year like that, you know, you're going to get an increase. Especially when, think about it, the status quo is, you know, 6.8%. That's like, we're doing nothing, right? That's like, you ran at a 92% loss ratio, you'd probably get a 6.8. You ran at 103, so you've got to, you know, think about it like that. This is what we were up against, that we had these two little babies, and so, and this is not an uncommon thing. Newborns are among the high-cost claims nationally, always on the list. So newborn can be very expensive, if some, a little baby ends up in the NICU, it costs a lot of money. We're actually, we're seeing more of that. I don't know if people are having kids at older ages, but it is very common to see, like, preemie babies that end up with $400,000 claims, very, very common. But, and cancers are also obviously on the list there, and that's also always a top driver of high-cost claims. So there's nothing really surprising, but you, you had a fair amount of high-cost claims. So this, so for the most recent time period that we're looking at, you had eight that were over $150,000, totaling $1.9 million. The prior year, you had seven that were totaling $1.4 million. And School Care pools the claims over $150,000 out of your renewal, so basically, you pay a pooling fee, and then they take those out. And that's meant because obviously, if you had, if they didn't pool the things out, then, you know, say you had a million-dollar claim, you know, everybody's premium would go way up, that doesn't make sense. So that's meant to be, make things kind of equitable, and to smooth, it's like, for smoothing factor, so that over time, it doesn't go so up and so down. So it was a tough year. This is an eye chart, it's just to show you that things have turned for the better. Okay? So this is this year. This is the first six months of, of the current plan year that you're in, so July 2024 to December 2024. And you're running in the first six months of the year at an 85% loss ratio, which is really good. So the babies are better, you know, your claims are running better, which is great. Now, what's going to happen? School Care will use 75%, they're going to have, there's going to be two columns, they're going to use 75% of your most recent year and 25% of the prior year, okay? In the formula, in figuring out your renewal. So part of your prior year experience is still going to be in there. And it's kind of early, so there's eight more months that we're going to have until School Care, you know, delivers your renewal or calculates everything out. So it's, it's, it's too early to tell. Like, there's a lot that can happen, but let's just say we're in a whole better place than we were a year ago. Sometimes I feel like I come into these meetings, I'm setting the stage for the big increase, but I, we're kind of in a better spot, right? Like, a lot of that's resolved. You're running right now much better, much better position. You have to remember that that doesn't necessarily mean that you get a flat, right? Because we have medical trend, so you have to think about that. But compared to a 103 in '85 is awesome, so. And this right now are the current high-cost claims, so very normal.
Neoplasma?
Cancer. Want me to turn it over to you?
Yeah, sure, I can take this.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Jana. So what we're trying to do here is we did, we have like year bullets, and then how it compares to School Care as a whole.
Yeah, so this is, it's called a CAP report, and so we pull these together each year. You've probably seen some of this data in the past, have already gone over this information with Jack, so he's seen a lot of this information. But it just talks again, it, you know, there's a lot of chart information again on the right-hand side, but the Concorde total plan spend, again, we talked a little bit about this, it's trending at 10.1% compared to School Care total plan spend at 10.9. The medical plan for Concorde per member per year is up 9.2%, while School Care is up 10.8. And as we already touched on, obviously, prescriptions tends to be the higher-cost driver, and that's not different for both groups. Concorde's up 19.6%, with School Care being up 11 and a half. And so this is just talking, there's comparables between the current period, which is July of '23 through June of '24, so the last full plan year, comparing to a base period of the previous full year. So that's July of '22 through June of '23. So it's just giving you a snapshot of how those two look for the last two full plan years.
And in the middle of that eye chart on the In the middle of that eye chart on the right, you can see thirteen million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, that's literally the total cost that, of what you paid, like you, if that's employer plus employee, but still, like that's your total spend, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, and there's a red circle there which we'll actually touch on, on the next slide, to pull that piece out, because it's talking about the specialty pharmacy spend, which Christie already alluded to, that's, again, it's just a really high cost driver and I know when I'm chatting with folks on the phone, I'll, I'll just kind of allude, it's, it's almost like watching the stock market, you know, it's very, you know, supply and demand driven, it's not wholly static and so it's tricky for folks when their drug prices seem to move on them, that's just kind of how it tends to flow. So Concord specialty plan spend is trending at forty-two and a half percent.
But one of the reasons though, yeah.
Yeah, and so Christie alluded to this before, so she talked about that savon SP program, some of you may or may not have heard of it, it was a program we put in a couple of years ago and it's really a program that Cigna came to us at school care talking about, they're always working with us, looking at our own trend, what can we do to implement as far as programs go to mitigate costs as much as we can. And the savon SP program is one that we did put into place with them, it takes a few specialty, very high cost specialty drugs, it's a finite group and it can shift from year to year, but it has been pretty static. Folks who take those high cost drugs can get into that program and it takes the cost of the drug and really pulls it out of their plan, it doesn't affect their deductible, it doesn't affect their out-of-pocket maximum, but they as an employee actually have zero cost for those drugs. So it hits the plan, we pay at school care sort of a lesser amount, it's a bit of a way for, Cigna has found a way to be creative at using those drug rebates.
They use the manufacturer coupon.
Yeah.
And they apply the coupon to the plan.
Because it's hard sometimes for those to complement and work with insurance companies, Medicare, all those things, those rebates are really tricky to merge with insurance, so this is a program Cigna implemented to allow them to be able to use them and apply them and make it easier on the employees. So it did save a lot of money initially and like we said, then you're able to benefit from it in the initial program, but then as it goes on, that savings has been found and now you sort of moderate again and this is sort of what that starts to look like. So the first year back is sort of a snapback of a rubber band and it's, it's different, but it should start to moderate out also, so I think you're just seeing sort of that snapping of the rubber band.
It's still in place, the people are still on them, but it's just that you don't get another twenty-two percent, like they've already, that's already been saved, now we're just at that lower level and then you just add on new drugs and.
Right, so, yeah, and that'll be, they'll keep playing with the names of the drugs on there and Cigna keeps watching that to see what's going to be the most effective, to make sure that that, that makes a difference going forward. So these are some of the other things that we saw in the data, another thing that we saw that kind of jumped out at us is noted here is that there seems to be more visits to cardiologists. So that sort of showed up, I don't even think it was on the last plan year before that, but it's shot up sixty-eight percent over the previous year. So again, that's just something that, okay, here's a little clue about a condition that's showing up within your employee pool and so it's just sort of something to take note of. Go ahead for the next slide. So you might think, okay, what, this is what I always try to think about and what I talk to folks about when we're reviewing these numbers is, what can we do? You know, it's one thing to hear about it, okay, sorry, yeah, there's nothing that you can do about some of this stuff, but there are some things that can be done and that's where we talk about the well-being program, you know, we are always out there encouraging folks to take advantage of it, do any education that we can do so folks know how to navigate it, how to use it for themselves, we created a program that tries to meet folks wherever they are, whether they're already exercising, want to start, haven't started, not sure if they're interested, you know, all sorts of places, and we can give them incentives of six hundred dollars for their employees as in also for their spouses that are on the plan. So that's what they can earn by doing various activities and we include all kinds of things, preventive visits, physical exercise, mental health activities, that they take part in EAP case management, there's a lot of different ways folks can earn these incentives because health is a pretty wide-ranging thing and we want to help them get better as much as we can with whatever program they will use. So the next slide shows you a little more detail about that, alluding to health coaching here, because if we talk about some of these chronic conditions, health coaching is a wonderful way to sort of help people and they can earn up to six hundred dollars so they can maximize their benefit if they elect a health coach. If they're dealing with cancer treatment or some of these more chronic type of conditions, they can get themselves a health coach and have help from that person on a regular basis and they'll help them make sure they're finding in-network providers, if they need prior authorizations for surgeries or treatments, they will help them get those in place, same for prescription drugs, help them navigate that because that can get complicated in making sure, so this person sort of holds their hand knowing that they're having to do a lot of help and get a lot of treatment throughout the way, so this is a way to help them do that and we give them incentives to try to take advantage of that so they can get the most support that they can get.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Is that like a reduction off their deductible or you actually give them incentives?
Cash in hand, is what it is, yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we've got a new program we're going to be rolling out next year that'll give them a little more flexibility on what those incentives look like, but it's much the same, but, yeah, that's a great question. And so this outlines what your top spend is by condition, a lot of these tend to be pretty static throughout our groups, you can see on yours, musculoskeletal conditions are one of the biggest drivers, it is on every single group that we work with, it is in the top three every single time and you can also see neoplasms or cancers is also right there at the top. So it talks about your cancer spend, that's up four point six percent and the spend per claimant, so each person getting treatment has gone up thirty-one and a half percent. So your total spend has gone up, but what the people that are getting their treatments are having to pay has gone up exponentially and our school care cancer spend is a little bit less at three point six and spend per claimant is up ten point six, so not quite as high as the thirty-one that your folks are seeing. So again, it depends, it's hard, you know, where you go for treatments can matter, what types of drugs that you're being prescribed matters, how long is the treatment matters, I mean, there's so many factors in there, so again, not necessarily controllable costs, but things to just be aware of, of what might be happening with that. And then again, we already mentioned that there were two newborns that had a high cost and that spend was up five hundred plus percent, so that's a big one and again, not much that can be done about that. So when we talk about musculoskeletal, that has always been on everybody's chart, every district that we work with throughout the state and so that's why we have implemented this program called Hinge Health, we've been doing this for a few years now, it's a completely free, basically at-home access to physical therapy. I got to guinea pig this program in the beginning and so you literally virtually get to meet with a physical therapist, they assess your motion, how are you moving, what can we do to help, they assign you exercises you do on a regular basis, you get all these fun little gadgets, little, you know, straps you can put on so they can track how your leg is moving if that's what you're exercising, tablets, all sorts of different things and so it's obviously for folks who are maybe experiencing shoulder pain, knee pain, all the regular painful parts, back, all this sort of thing, free physical therapy from home and the idea is really helping people to manage their pain, hopefully improve it in such a way that they are, can jump off of the track of straight to surgery. Because a lot of folks will go in and they got shoulder pain and it's kind of, you know, you hear this a lot where if someone has a hammer and there's a nail, so you go to see your osteo person and they're like, okay, surgery, so there, there can be other managing things that you can do, so if you can get in a nice physical therapy program and free from home, you can work out at home and not have to go out and do anything. Another program that they've implemented this year is a women's pelvic health program because finally we're starting to talk more about specifically, let's help women in the ailments that they deal with as they age, this is one of those and so that's been a very popular program, we've had a lot of folks taking advantage of that and again, we do our best to make sure people know about these programs and encourage them, so anything that we all can do to help make sure folks know, there are resources out there to take advantage of. So this is your preventive care, how are y'all doing, getting breast cancer screenings, cervical cancer screenings and colon cancer screenings, these are what we specifically measure on these, y'all are doing really, really well and that's great to see that you can see that your screening rates are going up, everything is right along the norm as it should be or even higher than. And when they look at your Cigna norm, which is, you know, the blue ones if you will, those are actually comparing them to national education groups throughout the country. So Concord School District is doing quite nicely compared to the national averages, so keep encouraging folks to get their preventive screenings because you can find things earlier that makes a really big difference. So this is your pharmacy executive summary here, your generic prescription, so folks getting generic prescriptions, that's up, that's doing quite nicely at ninety-four point nine percent and that's up slightly over the form year, which was ninety-four point two percent and it's right along the lines really of our school care average of folks taking generics and so that's always very encouraging when you get to see that a lot of people are heating that, that's another sort of steering program Cigna puts into place to encourage folks to get generics if there is an option available and they can physically react positively to it. So y'all are doing really nicely on that front, which saves costs. And the next slide helps to outline this, I always like to point out, when you look, you can't really see it again, but on that whole list of twenty-five prescriptions, these are the top drugs that your folks are taking, there is only one on there that's capitalized, meaning it's not a generic necessarily, every other one is a generic drug. So the volume of drugs, most people are taking those and that one that's not a generic is pretty low cost, so it's not too, too bad, but it gives you an idea too of the types of conditions folks are treating, depression, cholesterol, hypertension, thyroid issues, those are sort of the top driving, you know, causes that folks are taking and they're not changing from year to year either, same reasons for last year. And I know a lot of folks tend to think it's concerning that so many people are taking a depression prescription, it, it really isn't, if your folks are depressed, I mean, a lot of people are, I'm glad they're getting treatment for it, it's a positive thing that they're taking prescriptions to manage, you know, their conditions that they're dealing with, so I look at that as a positive thing, but again, looking pretty positive there. So another type of program, we were talking earlier about the GLP ones and folks trying to help manage their, you know, lose weight, get more physically active, we have this program called OMADA, now it's a little bit more elaborate called OMADA Complete because there are different types of programs within this, another free, certainly entirely free employees, there's a pre-diabetes program, so folks who are being told you are prediabetic, you ought to do some changes about your health, this is a free program they can get involved in. New, there's a program for folks who've already been diagnosed with either type one or type two diabetes and then also hypertension or high blood pressure. So folks are diagnosed with those, they can take part in this completely free program, they get connected with a health coach that navigates, kind of holds their hand, checks in with them on a regular basis, answers any questions, supports them with exercise programs and nutrition programs. So as we're talking about that option of folks to include GLP ones on their coverage, this is the program that we're asking them to put in place as well, because you have to take part in OMADA and it's a really positive program, we've heard from so many of our, our employees that they love it. I was talking to a woman earlier today who's like dying to get back in it because she just had so much benefit.
And you get like a personal coach, right?
Yeah, yeah, and they will help you out, they'll, they'll bug you as often as you want them to bug you, you know, they'll, they'll be right there and answer any of your questions, but people have a great amount of success with that, it's been, it's been a wonderful program, we're really happy about that. So, you know, as we see the data and we see your claims and things that your employees are dealing with, these are some of the answers we work with Cigna to try to come up with to give a solution so that folks can take advantage of that and again, do what we can to sort of mitigate some of the costs that you do see with your claims, because some of it we can try to control and do something positive about.
How are our participation rates in these programs?
We don't generally get sort of by group, but I would say our, our school care pool is, is doing pretty well, there's a pretty good amount of folks that are in there and, and they keep increasing each year, more and more folks hear about it and again, we hear from some folks, there's one of our gentlemen in our membership group, our council that loves it, is in it, just like cheerleads about it and we, I, everywhere I go, I do a training with employees and there's always someone in the room that's like, I've done it and I love it and it's great and it's helped me a ton, so, you know, when folks do call and ask us about GLP one coverage and like you said, currently we have to say no, we don't and, you know, Concord doesn't cover it or whoever doesn't cover it, this is a great option to be able to jump into instead and it's free and we'll do our best to help you get there, you know, without having to take a prescription.
Thank you.
So how mu, how frequently or what do you do to, in our schools, to educate people and promote this? Do you have like, do we have like a, a, you know, health fair, do we have a week of just giving them information? What do we do as a school district to do that?
I know for our sake, so we, so I'll, I'll speak from my end, is we do open enrollment presentations, we try to do those in the springtime, come out with every group and make sure they do that, if they don't invite us on to campuses, to schools, then we have virtual presentations or on our website, they can listen to the presentation, they're all right there, so folks can hear about what programs we offer throughout the year, we're always open to doing onsite trainings about any of the resources we have and then we do a lot of, you know, emails and, and other sort of virtual, you know, information sharing, so newsletters and other emails and instant messages, SMS messaging, all kinds of things to make sure folks are, right now, we're doing a good-for-you recharge and another like through the well-being program where every single week, folks are getting an email and we're talking about all these programs, mental health resources, types of programs like these, so we, we try to get the word out, it's just a matter of folks.
Do we do, do we do things of professional development, do we do things in, you know, you know, teacher rooms, any of those things?
Yeah, I mean, Michelle and her team are out in the buildings, but a lot of the information we get is all via email, so I know about the HIP program or whatever you call it and all the different things that you, yeah.
You've got it, heard of it.
I think that's the message.
They do direct mailers too, because we get stuff at our house, so.
That too.
Physical mail. Email, direct mail and then obviously Michelle and her department do a lot of that work.
Yeah, I know I get phone calls on a regular basis and we'll talk to people on the phone whenever they have questions about it.
PD, I don't think we've really had anything with PD.
I just am looking as to how often we're getting in front of people with this, I mean, certainly it's the cost savings for the district, but more importantly, it's the health outcomes for our employees, our teachers and staffs.
The other thing that they do, which is very interesting, is they'll do personal phone calls, which is, I think that's a little, a little extra stuff compared to the, you know, because sometimes you're like, who is this? That's, that's who it is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good try.
Okay, almost there.
Yep, moving on, but I will say that Cigna's programs, they're not just fluffy, like they're very meaty, like they're, they actually, they're pretty robust, so they do, Cigna does a good job. Okay, so dental quickly, not as large a spend as medical, it's paid by the district, the claims increase projected for seven one twenty-five for the year is twenty-seven thousand, you, you've, there's something called a prefund where they kind of like keep a deposit on hand and it just kind of goes up and down depending on headcount or claims, so you need a little bit more for the prefund, your admin fee was held, dental's pretty predictable, you have, you know, a thousand dollars max out of pocket, once you hit that, like everybody gets a bucket of a thousand dollars, once they're done, the thousand dollars are done, so there's no high cost claims in dental, it's a capped benefit. And then vision is fully insured and you've got the fifteen percent rate decrease and held for four years, so that's great. And Newt of Omaha is fully insured and we got a one-year rate guarantee with a whole non-all lines of coverage, which is great. And we choose Newt of Omaha because they're very accountable, so they're, we have real people that we work with and boy, do they, they, we'll go over and above, I've had a couple of times when maybe like a clerical error was made or something and, but you knew the intent of what the group wanted, but, and they'll say to me like, you know legally, you have no ground to stand on, I'm like, I know, that's why I'm calling, but you know what they meant and they will honor it and pay claims out, which is rare and so that's why we choose and we stay with them. And then benchmarking, so we like to benchmark your plan against others and so this is a Milliman database, so we're going to look at your two thousand twenty-five numbers, but it's, it's, it's for the two thousand twenty-four data because we have to obviously have a whole year of data and we're just at the beginning of two thousand twenty-five, so we're going to be looking at two thousand twenty-four benchmark data here, we're going to look against the national, so just all, all groups nationally, New Hampshire and then educational groups nationally. And so, on the right is school care and on the left is the benchmarks, so if you look at the deductible. So if you look at the deductible, so your yellow plan had twelve fifty and then the orange plan has two thousand, and you can see the benchmarks nationally in New Hampshire and then in the industry. So obviously deductibles are much higher than what you're passing along. And then out-of-pocket maximums, you can see you're at two thousand for the yellow plan and four thousand for the orange. And if you look to the left, they're all running around six thousand as the norm. So you, you know, your, your plans are much richer than what we're seeing nationally in the state of New Hampshire or in the industry as a whole.
And the phrase stipend has been removed. What is that in reference to?
And then the orange plan has a HSA contribution, you know, where the, the district is putting money into the health savings account and there used to be a stipend. Is that what you're asking? The stipend's been removed? So there used to be a salary augmentation to help, because school care is limiting how much of that deductible can be funded. But Concord had a program for a while that was negotiated that would make people like, that would make them whole. But that's been removed, so it, it wasn't something that was there forever. And to be honest, it really wasn't something that was even, I don't know, maybe appreciated is the wrong word, but people didn't seem like, they were willing to take, they're ready to take the plan before they even knew about that part. Like it, it, so it didn't seem like it was necessary maybe. And then the two-point-oh, so if we go to the next one, so these are the, looks very similar. These are the two-point-oh plans where the deductible went up a little bit, but you can still see relative to the benchmarks that, you know, there was definitely room to kind of just inch that deductible up a little bit from the yellow plan or the orange plan. And then if you go to the next one, so this is, these are premiums. So it's a little bit of an eye chart. So you're, you're on the left and then on the right are the benchmarks. So your premiums are higher, but you have to remember, your plans are a lot richer. Okay, so we're comparing it against deductibles that are three thousand or four thousand dollar deductible plans and you're at, you know, twelve fifty or fifteen hundred or two thousand. So your plans, your premiums are more expensive. Your plans are a lot richer. And then this is a little bit of an eye chart, but this is the employee and employer contributions. And so we've got, so like if we take the yellow, so the yellow and then the yellow with choice. So the top, like the one eighty-six thirty would be a monthly employee contribution for the yellow and then for the single and the yellow with choice, the monthly contribution would be one seventy-eight eighty-eight. It's a little, it's the four percent decrement of the, the two plans. And then on the orange, and that's at an eighty-five, so that's with the employee paying fifteen percent and the employer paying eighty-five, which is your current split for the yellow. When we move over to the orange, you've got some people at an eighty-five fifteen, some people at a ninety-five five. And so that's why, like if we take the top one, so the orange plan, the employee contribution at eighty-five fifteen, so they're paying fifteen percent would be one forty-three seventy. At ninety-five five, where they're paying five percent would be forty-seven ninety. And if we go just below that, that's the orange two-point-oh. So that's how, that's how you read it. So, you know, your employee contributions are, it depends, but a little bit higher than some of the, than some of the benchmarks. It depends. Like two-person is not higher, single is higher. So you kind of have to just like read across the charts.
I think that was it. What was the last slide? Just in mind.
That's the last one on the thing.
That was the last slide.
And that concludes the presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you.
I think one thing that's important to note that I mentioned in the last budget is that if we had stayed status quo from twenty-twelve and kept that original green plan, and the only ones that have green plan are retirees that were able to keep it and I think there's only two left now. But we've had a cost avoidance of about four-point-two million just on the district side. So that's six percent on the tax rate right there. If we had just done nothing, kept both same plans, kept same contributions. So with their help, Melissa Witherspoon, who's the benefits coordinator here, we've done a lot of work to try to educate people and slowly migrate plans and kind of keep up with trends. Obviously, you see nationally, New Hampshire and industry, it's a little, I mean, from a pay standpoint, but deductibles, it's a rich plan. But it's not overly rich where it would have been if we had stayed where we were.
So the, the family, the green plan for a family for twelve months is fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. That's how much a family plan is on the green plan.
And our orange plan, I think, is forty-one.
And the orange plan is, let's see, we'll do two, five, eight, six point five.
I'm sorry, yellow.
The orange is thirty-one thousand.
And the yellow is about forty, forty-one.
Yep. So significant difference. Let me think about that. Fifty-five thousand dollars for a family for a year for a health plan. Yeah. So you did save a ton. I mean, and Jack really has, deserves a ton of credit. He's like, is like the trailblazer, like way out in front. And then other districts kind of watching what you guys are doing, but he really adopted some of these things way before others and he saved a ton of money by doing it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
It makes me feel like I need to go exercise.
Feeling last year too, you give the presentation, I was like, I need better heart health. Thank you for the motivator.
Yeah. Do you want the actress kept here or are you all set with?
I don't think we need the actress. Yeah, thank you. Want to go for a walk? Do you want to make a motion to go for a walk?
I move that we move.
Okay, that was such a great dad joke. I love it. All right.
I want to start with that, although it was a great hour, but really did that.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You too.
Goodbye. Thank you. Were you tagged in, Mr. Ferbitio? Were you tagged in?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Well, I was tagged in because one of the things that Kathleen asked me to do earlier on the show was to kind of look at a proposal to, how do we, I don't know. I don't even want to say save money because save money may not be the thing, but how do we fix our costs a little more around some of our van transportation? Because as I approached the board early in the year, we're way over. We were over seven hundred thousand dollars in what we had to do and we came and talked about using some of my special ed, you know, reserve account to be able to do that. We did that earlier in the year and it's been steady. What we predicted, we've been right about there. You know, we're, we're hovering right about there. So did some research, talked to some vendors and put together a proposal that you'll see in front of you that kind of outlines all the components that Jack and I believe will be involved with if we're to look forward and have our own van transportation division. And again, this is in draft form. This is our best estimate on cost based on what's out there currently and we walked through several components. And please stop me and ask questions along the way. We looked at what the fleet would cost us if we, we, if we purchased vans, around fifty thousand dollars apiece. We looked at personnel and drivers, you know, estimated salaries, things like that. But that's still very rough numbers because that would of course have to be negotiated. So again, in, in doing that, again, management, how would this be managed and who would be there? We need a coordinator. We need someone to schedule the routes, a scheduler and a kind of air traffic controller of all these buses that would have to, have to happen and vans that go around. And then scheduling software, things like that, maintenance personnel. And then as you see, those costs and then benefits of course, which we just heard all about. Facility cost, if we leased a facility, what that, what would that look like? And Jack and I, you know, as I think, you must think Jack and I just drive around with the properties, but Jack and I looked at another property actually for, for this and kind of said that we had something in mind and contacted the realtor to see if that was something that would be available to us. And it still is available, so it's something that we would have a facility to put these vans at. And then fuel and maintenance, costs of course I outlined, insurance and liability, what you need, training and certifi- and certification. There still does need to be a certificate and training for them, although it's not to the level of a CDL. All right. It's, it's still, it's still a bus driver training that requires many hours and a test by the DOE and a certification and all the, the, the safety measures we take if someone's going to be with children, such as criminal background checks, all those, all those things. We want to make sure they're safe. And then annually, they'll have an amount of hours they need to do to maintain their license too on top of that. But we looked into all of those particulars and costs and it seems doable to be able to do that. Then of course some technology that we would need. We would really want cameras. We would want GPS tracking. We would want route scheduling software to go along with that. And then they will be school bosses for the Concord School District, so they have to be identified in that. And the strangest thing that we found out is you can't have green buses. I thought that was a strange little tidbit I found out when doing this. I don't know why, but you can't have green buses. I wanted them to be green with white lettering and I was told, no.
I'm so sorry.
No, so sorry.
Scrap the entire plan.
So we, we'll pick color down the road. I guess that's not a huge detail, but I was just trying to, something distinct we were thinking of. So that is kind of signage and things like that that will have to go on across to that. And then on the next page, I broke out a budget summary for you along with kind of what it would cost for initial one-time cost to get it up and running. We're looking about, you know, you know, as you see, one point eight, one, about a little over a million dollars. You know, one point one million dollars about that. And then what, what I'm, what I'm more feeling pretty good about are those annual costs and where we are. And, and, you know, it's higher than we have budgeted this year for annual costs, but that's pretty fixed. I don't see that, you know, over the long-term fluctuating change. So that's kind of what this would look like. There's opportunity also here that we can, you know, to look at our neighboring districts who also have these costs to possibly partner with them and, and bring this down, you know, and, 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 you know, if I have a, if I have a van going out to the seacoast with two people in it, well, I got six more spots that I can kind of pick up from Merrimack Valley or Bow on the way and load that van up to go out. Because there's, you've heard me talk about programs. There's not many right now. We're having trouble placing. We're having trouble in programs, but we're all utilizing the same programs in the area because there's not a ton of programs within a fifteen, twenty-minute drive plus. They're all thirty to forty-five minutes of programs that we utilize for items replacements. And that doesn't count foster, homeless, all the other areas we have to place.
So good question then. Based on the number of vans, would you expect we'd still have to contract out at least some transportation in addition to the fleet?
This figures the amount of kids that we currently have and current needs we have. So we should be able to. No guarantees. As I said, this is a draft. This is my best thinking. But it looks like this should be able to take care of our costs, so we wouldn't need to do that.
Gotcha, thank you.
That part.
Right, because one of the things that occurs to me right off the bat is that for an accessible van, you're looking at double, like the fifty thousand apiece. So for equitable access, we'll definitely need accessible vehicles.
We have some of them now. So we, we, we also have, you know, we, we still have our small buses that wouldn't go away and they're still, they're still there that, that, that runs through transportation now. So for our, for our wheelchair vans, things like that, we have, you know, accessible things like that. We still have some of our vans that will still probably run for, for a little bit. But not to the, right now, as you know, there's been a shortage of drivers.
Right.
Vans that aren't moving today because we don't have drivers to put in that with CDL licenses.
And no accessible buses that are going to the seacoast or anything. Right. John, can, or would you be able to talk to me a little bit about, like, do we bill for Medicaid for transportation?
Yes.
So can you talk a little bit about what kind of revenue we could bring in with something like this?
It's, uh, it's so varied that I, that I wouldn't want to put a number to it, but it does, it comes down to it's a percentage per dollar. So it's basically roughly twenty cents of a dollar that we can look at to, to do that. So it's kind of depending on, there's a lot of factors to that. What are the supplemental factors that the child needs, why they need it and all those things, factors come into it. Length of drive, you know, is there, is there a nursing support? Is there a monitor support needed? All those things come into it. So there's multiple factors on the different rides.
Right. But hypothetically, I see what you're talking about of economies of scale. If we could get other local districts to buy in to a thirty-minute commute, theoretically, we could bill for those students?
We couldn't bill for them. They, they would bill for them. They would.
Okay, they're sending district, but we could do it.
We could bill them for the cost of, of the transportation, the mileage, the whole, everything that you see on this list, a percentage of that would go towards us billing the district. Just like now, if we have a, you know, you know, for example, we have a, 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 a kind of a chart, best way to say it, for how we bill students from Deerfield who come here. If they have, you know, extenuating needs and we have to bill for them, we, we do that now. And, and, and Jack and Dawn Silly, who works in my office, work on that all the time to have adequate bills and make sure that they are for the services rendered. This would be very similar. We'd set up a system of like, you know, is it a bus doesn't need, you know, what's the cost of that bus? Does it need anything special on it or a specialized person with that? What's the cost to run that bus? What's the maintenance on it? What's the wear and tear on it? There'd be an upcharge for all of that back to the, to the other, other places too. So it's got potential.
I can see why you're exploring it.
Yeah.
Can I ask two questions? The estimated driver costs is based on comparable salaries for our current drivers. Is that where that figure's coming from?
Yeah, and an average. When I looked up and did, did some, some search around and talked to a couple other, what are vendors paying, things like that, that's just an average cost of what, what. There's a lot of these newer startups out there because of the extreme costs and they're charging us a lot right now. You know, they're charging us, you know, anywhere from three hundred to six hundred dollars a day to transport our kits right now. And so by just talking to the industry standard of what the costs are, what they're paying their drivers, it's right around there.
That's great, because I would expect with a shortage of drivers that we would want to incentivize people to work for us.
It, it, it's like anything, you know, my, I'll just say my concern. I said to Kathleen this morning, she says, "How, how, how good are you feeling about this?" And I said, "Yeah, kind of, I'm feeling somewhat good about it, but I'm feeling that, that I'm still concerned from a personnel matter." You know where we struggle with that, that level of personnel. You know, where it's, you see it in restaurants, you see it in nurses, you see it in, you know, anywhere in the hospitals, you see it something like that, that, that pay rate in that, in that, that, that level of employee, we're short everywhere. You know, our EAs, our, our population, it's a very hard, there just isn't a huge workforce out there for it. So it's a concern that, you know, if, if we're hiring that, you know, we're solving one problem, but I'm not sure we're not creating another one.
Well, there will always be.
Now everyone's driving a bus and I don't have enough educational assistance in the, in, in the buildings or people in our lunchroom or people of our custodial staff, you know, that rate of pay is right around where they all are. My concern is I'm solving one problem, creating another. And, and not to be ob, not to be so pessimistic about it, but it's a good proposal. I think it's solid in the numbers. It's just there's some concerns about that everything, you know, that we can get the vans, that we can get all those things. Those are still some, some questions that are out there.
Yeah, which actually brings me to my next question, which is, based on those concerns, would you see a phase in approach as, or a hybrid approach better than a full fleet approach? Like, do you think the, I mean, do you think we have to have sort of a, a minimum threshold of vans to make it worth it to get the software, to lease the space? And, or do you think that it would be, that we could invest in maybe half of this and then do another, like maybe start with ten vans and then do another ten vans down the road?
I'm unsure. I'll be totally honest with you. I'm unsure. I don't, I don't have experience running a van.
Never had experience running a van company.
So I have to just say that. You know, I'm an educator taking care of students with needs.
I completely understand that you are outside of your.
This is a, this is a little, so Jack and I have talked a lot about that. So it's kind of, there is experts in the field that run bus companies. So I, I wouldn't know that supply and demand part of it yet. I just know that this is kind of based on the numbers what we would do.
Would it be worth it to hire a transportation consultant to give us that reassurance? Like somebody who would lend their expertise to a proposal?
Jack, what do you thought, thoughts on that?
Well, I think there's a public session portion of it and then a non-public, especially as it relates to negotiations. So if we go into non-public, I could tell you some of that strategy for a few minutes. But, you know, it's really going to depend on how things happen over the next month of some things that we're putting in place. And we've been given back, some feedback from our current director on how we could potentially take the 60 to 75 students that we have now and maybe consolidate that and roll it into our existing CDL buses. We do have two non-CDL buses now. And then what would be the ramifications of that? But there's some things you'll be voting on in the next month that might help that.
Thank you.
The 175, you said that's how many kiddos we're transporting as of a specific date or is it average over the past few years?
It's about average about where we are. We stay, you know, you looked at, you know, we've had a, and I said this at, you know, when we talked about the annual report too, that we've increased, but very steadily. We haven't had a huge jump. So, I mean, we've stayed, our percentages have gone up like 1% or 2%, like over the course of three or four years, we haven't really, so that's about average of where we are over the last three years.
Side note, I really commend you for diving into this. This is probably, I don't know, a stretch assignment in many ways. So it's great that you're here presenting this in front of us. That takes a lot of courage and you did wonderful work with us.
Thank you.
So that's, yes. And then I know, Jack, previously, and I apologize if I missed this at another meeting, you have had some preliminary high-level conversations with other districts that they would be interested in working with us on this, right?
Yeah, I know, I both had that conversation with Kathleen as well.
Okay. And you felt like they're eager, like, yes, let's.
They would like to know how, yeah, if they can contribute in some way.
They experienced the same challenges you have in terms of costs. And they're, as I say, they're getting their pockets cleaned, right? And so they're looking, thinking that collaboration and coming up with a plan together will benefit all of us.
It really would.
As John described it, you know, you're going to the seacoast, you're going to go by Merrimack Valley and Bow and maybe somebody else on the way.
Yep.
And I think school districts will benefit from that. And right now, these private companies, we pay full price. The next town pays the full price and the next town pays a full price. They got their full bus, but it's like, yeah.
Yeah.
So we think we can, I mean, don't get me wrong, everything John told you was right on, right, spot on. But we think that has some potential.
Yeah, I agree.
So we also do a lot of cost share now. Like if I know if it's a district bus going somewhere, we're on the phone with all of us, myself and the directors in the Lakes and the South Central Region, we talk often about this. If there's an email goes out, "I got a student going here," you know, "Can I hitch a ride with you? And can we share costs on that?" We do that.
That's so great.
We do that continuously, it's been part of what I've done for years and doing that. The night, see, we, back on the, I'll be more optimistic this time, I think, when I talk about it. The fact is that we have infrastructures in place, we know how to employ people. We have good systems in place. You heard about our healthcare and all the benefits we have for employees. So we're at an advantage over some of these smaller, you know, organizations because we have infrastructures in place.
Yeah, right.
And for this, this would just be another faction of what we do in doing. It's not a huge out-there left-field stretch and it's our business. We understand the business, we understand what kids' needs. Even sometimes more than providers, we understand the individual needs of the child. And like, you know, for example, if they're anxious about buses, they're anxious about things like that, we already know those informations, we're not sharing it. You know, we can train people on certain, you know, low-instance disabilities if it's something new for the driver that hasn't dealt with. We have that ability. So there's so many advantages to bring it in when we put kids at the center of that, I think.
Well, there's also advantages because we run our buses, we operate our own buses. We're not, so many other districts contract out to an outside, you know, agency that operates all of their buses, so they don't have the expertise and the knowledge base that we have. So that gives us an advantage in a, you know, competitive place.
Can you remind me about how much we spent last year on similar transportation costs?
It was almost $2 million. Budget 750 and we were 1.3 over.
So do you know about when a break-even point would be if we went forward with this? A couple of years probably, right?
It's going to be, yeah, we think a couple of years, depending on things simmer down and whether we can absorb some in our existing fleet, depending on if we hire drivers.
Right, that's the key.
26 big buses, 12 small buses right now.
Right.
So, but drivers are the challenge. And that CDL, we think, is one impediment to the process. But we'll tell you about some things we don't.
Okay, thank you. Kara?
Yeah, thank you for entertaining these questions, you guys. Understanding that the service that we provide with our own fleet may cost more initially than, than, you know, like if things do smooth out and transportation goes, you know, costs go down and the contracted services, are there issues with service with the contracted services that would be, that you would be more confident in if we had our own fleet? Like, are there cancellations that we worry about? Are they, you know, like, do you think our service would be better coming from in-house? Or do you have a high level of confidence in our contracted services?
So right now, our contracted services do a really nice job. And they're, you know, Terry Karate has a really nice job with having kind of his go-to services. And he keeps his, keeps the vendors very close and very in contact with that. So I want to really commend him for that, he's done a really nice job with that. I think that what is its lag time, you know, and sometimes we just, sometimes we can't get rides. Sometimes it's Terry and me two weeks on the phone trying to figure out a change in ride. Or sometimes it doesn't always go well and you've got a couple of mix of kids that don't get along on the bus and we need to make a change. That is a long lag time for us right now.
And it sounds like administrative time.
Yeah, and administrative. So some of this would be a lot more fluidity in us having control over, you know, that's it. I get a homeless student that, if we have a student that's homeless that, let's just say, from Manchester and is living, you know, that we have to transport, you know, back and forth, you know, things like that. I can do that fairly quickly if I have a little bit more local control. Terry's done a great job to be as responsible as he can. He doesn't own those companies. So it's really, we're competing against multiple other districts for these few slots that are open right now. This opens the pool a little more. So when you open the pool a little more, there's more responsive if we get the drivers.
Thank you for mentioning that, the use of your time and our administration time, like, when you have to spend so much time doing that, you're a very highly-paid traffic controller. So if you do feel that there is a strong, will free up some of your time and use those, you're hourly, we break that hourly into other things, that would be worth it, right? So, okay, that would be interesting to know, just keep track. Like, I would save like 10 hours a month, that's significant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Kathleen, oh, sorry.
I'm just going to ask a question, how do you want to proceed?
That was my question, was that going to be your question? I think you're all going to ask.
I was about to ask, yeah, what's next steps?
Great question, Kathleen.
Excuse me, I have to leave for my next meeting.
Yeah, I think we have an appetite to continue exploring.
Unless you have an objection, you're going to see this in your budget, number one. And number two, once we do the last, second to last item on your general public section, we'll go into non-public for three minutes. So you can see some of the mitigation stuff we're starting.
Yeah.
And that will impact the budget considering what you guys will do in your negotiations committee in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I think especially before the public hearing, I think being able to talk about that cost savings, again, from a time perspective and when that break-even point is, I think having a clear idea of that will be really impactful.
And again, I just want to stress too, I think Jack and I talk a lot, there's the break-even point. This, what it's going to do is fix costs in the long run. Costs are rising very quickly.
Always going to get worse.
This will, you know, although in the first year it may be a little more because there is always that startup and everything else happening, the second year won't, the second year will be pretty fixed. And the third year, right now, I'm trying to build a budget and come to Jack and he looks at me and goes, "What do you think the number's going to be?" And depending on a lot of factors and what they charge me, it's hard for me to put a pin in what transportation for homeless, preschool, foster, on a district, all these other factors, it's hard to put a pin in that because I'm dealing with many vendors and a lack of workforce. So it's like, how do you know what that's going to cost you? This will say, here's our fixed cost on this, if it's effective and it works.
It's a long-term investment, but again, it's.
Well, I'm also confident that Jack will, you know, spread the costs out appropriately that maximizes, you know, or minimizes the impact our budget and maximizes the benefits we get.
We've done some things to mitigate it, so we don't all at once. We don't plan on dropping you and me in boxes and saying, "Yeah, that's what it is." We'll have some creative solutions to get there. It's whether we phase it or.
And honestly, like, this looks good to me, just on first impression. I know there's going to be unanticipated costs and unanticipated benefits that we haven't, you know, so I'm not worried about, like, things coming out of left field necessarily. What I care about is if you think this is a good idea and you think this is a good investment and you think this is proper for Concord District to have. You know, like, you guys are the experts. And if this is an investment that you think is good for the district in the long term, we want to hear from you because just from a practical perspective, it seems like a really good idea. But if you're like, the workload is going to be too much, I want to hear that. And we can come up with a five-year plan for when it's going to work for us. Or if you're like, this is never going to work for us, I genuinely only care about your opinions on this.
So we have such good experience because you already own your fleet, right? So you've experienced what it's like to own it. And because it's been a positive thing, even through the most difficult times, you had, you delivered when other companies didn't have bus drivers, couldn't deliver, couldn't do routes. You were able to do that because you had the ability to be flexible, to change. And I see that same sense, still considering some of the concerns John brought forward, but all solvable? To me, that, it's the future investment that comes for me.
Yeah, capital investments.
Yeah, and I, you know, I drive up and down 93. I can't tell you how many mom and pops we've seen just every morning driving up and down the highway. And when I know that we can find it and a way to benefit us, control, it's about controlling costs. You know, it won't go away, John will tell you he has 140 preschoolers that need to get somewhere. Or we all of a sudden have homeless family or a foster placement that takes it right out of our hands. You're in a good place for it.
Yeah, I personally feel that the biggest risk in this would be the investment and then not being able to hire enough drivers to offset that so that we don't see as great a savings or benefits as we pro forma out on this. And I think we just need to be cognizant and manage that challenge and risk.
So that's not going to go away.
In some ways, that licensure that they have to get for the big buses is really, it's an impediment for us, right? Because it's a lot to do that and, you know, your drivers tend to be a little bit older and they don't want to go through all that. So when I see the folks driving up and down 93, John drives that road every morning with me, and they're a little bit older, they don't need that level of life and they have two or three kids on the bus, not 42 kids on the bus or 50. And it does make a difference. And so Jim, I agree with you, I'm worried about that. But with some things that Jack will share with you about our negotiations and I think we could manage this.
Well, and I also think that there are benefits and there's employment items that make our district very attractive or more attractive than other opportunities in other companies.
They just shared that with us this week tonight.
And this may be in non-public, or maybe you mentioned this, could we, would we pay for the become certified or the licensure?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay, Michelle, are we good to move on?
Let's move on.
I like this power.
Thank you very much for all your hard work, both of you.
How am I doing, Jack?
Great.
Great, perfect.
We'll tighten up real quick. So you have in front of you the budget presentation schedule. This is a rich version from earlier, based on the request of the board, is my understanding. So February 12th will be the opening presentation with a budget overview. And then you'll have three work sessions before the 5th, when you would need to post the budget because your charter requires a ten-day notification. So we're going to squeeze all that in, do a little bit of crash course, see where we're at on the 5th we post, then you have your public hearings. You'll have an open session after that public hearing and then look to finalize on March 26th.
Jack, when will we as a board be able to see the budget in detail? You usually post, put that in the.
My goal is to be that Friday to 14th. So people can spend Valentine's Day with their budget rather than maybe a significant.
Oh, that sounds so great.
Although some others may choose the 15th to be the.
An idea that I have floating around, I probably will not be able to get to it this year, but if I set it up for next year, I spoke to a bunch of other districts and they found working with their local public television, doing quick public finance 101, and this is not on you, this is board members, creating a quick video, be like, okay, in this upcoming hearing, we're talking about this, let me give you baseline what that means. And we may get no views, we may get tons, but giving that baseline education public that's available, like, just like we were talking about with Schoology, like how-to videos. So I'm working with a few folks to see what's already out there too, to direct people, like, this is what we're talking about.
That'd be great.
If two people watch it, it's two people, but.
Do you think we could thread them with the actual hearing? Like, so that when they go to YouTube to watch the hearing?
That's what I'm hopeful for, yep.
They would be before or after?
Right, it would be awesome. And there's a lot of resources already out there that we can use, GFPA, wherever. So I'll work with them and see what we can do, which would be nice. Sorry, go ahead.
So that's that, I think this was sent out to you prior and I haven't checked to see if this is posted on the web. If not, we can do that tomorrow. And usually what we do is we post this and then we have a column for the minutes, a column for the CDL.
I don't know if they've posted it yet.
And a column for the documents.
I'll check in a moment.
That'd be awesome.
I think we wanted to be in front of you first to make sure there wasn't anything else, so. Yeah, that'll be good.
Very cool.
And then final agenda item, we'll go into non-public for a few moments for that last item.
What am I supposed to say?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91-A colon 2, Article 1, Section A. Is there, I guess you have to ask for a second.
I will second.
Okay, and then do we roll call this one, I believe?
You do roll call this one.
Thank you.
Jim Richards.
Yes.
Cara Meeker.
Yes.
Jessica Campbell, yes.
All right, we're in non-public.
The A's have it.
Yes, so we're in non-public.
Yeah, you can tell them we're not going to come back in public.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
I think you're doing fantastic.
Thanks.
All right, let me see if I can get this up front so you just can see what's going on.
Well, you don't have to, although I did notice that Liz gavels with authority, man.